And welcome to the return of the Joint City Council and Millbrae Elementary School District Board of Trustees Special Meeting. It is at 7:00 this morning. We, I'm just so grateful to see you all here. It has been almost a year that we've been trying to get this meeting in person together. So I thank you so much for getting up so early and coming in today. I would start this off that for a lot of us, they've never had this meeting before. And when I was first elected, and I think for the first four years, we, the Millbrae Elementary School District, the San Mateo Unified High School District, and the Millbrae City Council would meet three times a year. And we would talk about things, often land use, you know, when the high school district was putting in the field lights, or if we were talking about rolling out certain programs. And something we never talked about, but I'm hoping we're going to be talking about more in the future, is safe routes to schools and things like that. It was a chance to get together. Then there was sort of a changing in staff, and two city council members would meet with two school board members, which is a process that can work. However, each one of us, school board members, city council members, work on different regional committees and different city committees. And there was no way to cross-communicate that way because we all live under the Brown Act. So I am so very grateful to have us all in the same room. And my number one goal, before I know we have to lose trustee Maggie Musa to get her kids to school, is to come up with a couple of dates around the year, and we set these dates, and we get them on everybody's schedule. And the big discussion point would be, do we want it in the morning? We didn't think about it until last week of what if we just had this meeting at, say, 5:30 before a council meeting or a school trustee meeting? The rooms are already set up on that. But that's my one goal that we hope we get out of this. So with that, again, welcome. I think what we're going to do, and we're going to jump right into that before reports, city manager and school superintendent, if we can do our welcome to everybody, because this is our first, we are being recorded, we'll go straight into discussion item 3A, and then we'll come back to reports on that. So I would love to start with who we are, and we're going to start with trustee Harborough.
Mike?
Frank Harborough, trustee, Millbrae School District, 16 years.
Karen Shin, trustee, Millbrae School District.
Maggie Musa, trustee, parent, community member.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Deborah French, superintendent of Millbrae Elementary School District.
Gina Pappin, Millbrae City Council.
Anne Schneider, mayor, City of Millbrae.
Anderson Sefon.
Millbrae City Council.
Angelina Cahalan, Millbrae City Council, parent.
Tom Williams, city manager, City of Millbrae. And I believe the mayor, when she said 5:30, she meant PM, not AM. Just for the record.
Elaine Tran, City Clerk.
Eduardo Gonzalez, deputy city clerk.
Great, and thank you. And sorry to change the agenda up, restructuring of joint meetings. And city manager, you and I didn't talk about this. Do you want me to take the lead, or can you? Hint, hint.
No, sure, mayor. I mean, I think this is, this seems very formal because we have MCTV here, but I think this should be kind of a roundtable discussion as in the past, so I think it's really at the pleasure of the city council and the board.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tom. I think in the past, we did meet three times a year quarterly as a team, but like I said, it was less formal. It was about the five of us and the five of you to talk about, you know, business, everyday business, things that as a school district we need to know in terms of for us to figure out what our school, kids counting, I mean, how many kids we have coming. You guys tell us what housing is coming in and how many students we're expecting to come into our schools so we can plan ahead. So it was more of an intimate discussion as how the school district and the city can work together on future projects, issues, whatever it is. So moving forward, 7:00 is great, but 7:00 is too early for my brain to think about. And I think we've met in, early in the past, but we also had evenings meetings, so if we want more of a community member engagement, so.
So what I'm hearing is evenings, which agrees to a council member who isn't here, who was worried about making sure that we provide an avenue for the public to attend.
Yeah, if I recall, in the past, we had parent community join our meetings, they had concerns. And unfortunately, some of the community members, they don't know, if they have a concern, they don't know if they should come to the city or the board members, because they just don't know if it's a school issue or it's a city issue. So a lot of times, when we have a joint meeting, we do have community members that would come and voice their concern. So an opportunity for the community to come and speak their mind would be great, because 7:00 in the morning, yes, they can watch it on TV, but it would be better to have those comments in person. If I recall, it was an issue about crossing guards and crossing, you know, in front of Green Hills, there was some issue about kids getting hurt. Yes, exactly. And I think it's a great discussion as a school district and a city to talk about it as a joint meeting, so we have a plan, a better plan, so we're not pointing fingers at each other. So it's just an example.
Thank you. Council, other thoughts? So if that then, I am thinking that the 5:30 PM before, say, a city council meeting could work. We alternate, though, don't we? We're second and fourth Tuesdays, your first and thirds. So would it be fair then to have before a council meeting and then before a school board meeting? And also, the other thing for people who are watching for the first time, we used to alternate the host. So one meeting, the host was the city, the next meeting, the host was the elementary school district, and we hoped that the high school district would show. They were invited, but they were never the host on that. So we could alternate it that way.
Just a reminder, mayor, for if we host on a board meeting night, we start closed session at 5:30, so it would have to be like a 4:30 start or a 4 o'clock start. Yeah, it would have to be on your nights than ours, because we do start at 5:30.
And you always have closed session?
Always.
Always, okay. I'm fine with that. And we can still let you set, Tom, city manager, if we did move, if it was always a city council meeting, and we're saying three times a year or four times a year?
Well, again, I think this is at the pleasure of, you know, the city council and the school board. Just a little bit more background, some of you may remember that there was a subcommittee of the city council and a subcommittee of school district, and they would meet and discuss things. And I think it was once a year, actually, they would bring the issues to the full board and city council meeting. So I think from listening to everyone, I would recommend two times a year. I think quarterly may be just too much. So that's what I would recommend.
Well, I hate to disagree with the city manager. The, I'm on the county bike pedestrian advisory committee, this is my eighth year, and then Millbrae has its bike pedestrian. And when we're meeting that infrequently, we're not moving forward on things like that that require both infrastructure, and we have our public works director here and our staff of bike pedestrian committee. It's just really hard to work together on things, and grants come on cycles that don't work under that timeframe. So if I can't get four times a year, I'd be happy with three times a year, but we might want to look at the schedule for the grant cycles. So safe routes to school grant cycle, I think, is the same every year. And in the past, it has hurt because it's, the city can't go for the safe routes to school grants. The school district has to, but we have to sync up the support letters and things like that. That's just one example. Maggie, then Karen.
I just wanted to say, I do recall, before the pandemic, three meetings a year was too much, and I think we decided that we meet twice a year, beginning of the year, to talk about how we're gonna, what issues are we going to be facing that year, and then end of the year to celebrate the good, the things that we've done and things that we need to work on for the following year. So that was something that we talked about in the past. And then the subcommittee wasn't, came in handy, because I think they used to meet monthly for coffee and just kind of just get little, get caught up on little things that happened during the year, so.
Thank you. I did not know that the committee ever met, because it was never reported out at council. So I hear that. So Karen.
I was just gonna make the same suggestion. We meet two times a year, and then have the subcommittee meet at least twice a year.
And maybe that's a solution. So if we do meet twice a year, and we can get at least one school board member and one council member to work on bike pedestrian issues?
Or two council, two school board members to work on all issues, not just bike and pedestrian.
But if we had a more formal way of reporting out, sorry Gina, go ahead.
I thought we'd be a little more informal. I'm sorry, ma'am. Just because, yeah, I think it's very important before school, so we can make sure you have what you need, whether it's striping or whatever, that's important to our coordination here. And then, you know, maybe mid-year or you guys, I mean, that can be decided, but to be most productive. And as the mayor said, you know, let's find out what the grant dates are, and then we, you know, I mean, we have some certain things we can target. I think that would be very helpful and productive.
I'm looking to my right, I'm not seeing any hand motions. So school beginning, when, for example, with our culture arts committee and the art show, trying to sync that up to work with the end, the time when the students have their art completed, has also been difficult. And we have never met the beginning of when teachers are planning their curriculum. That's a long way to get there. When do teachers plan their curriculum? When does the school district plan their work year in terms of the beginning of the year? Because to me now, the beginning of the year is August, so does that mean July? What does that mean, beginning of the year?
Well, beginning of the year for next year has, is well underway in Millbrae. So we begin planning for next year in January. So we're knee-deep in staffing, in professional learning, like, all of those things have already been determined, budget planning. So as far as curriculum development, that's obviously dependent upon the teacher, their tenure, how long they've been in the subject matter they're teaching. So the extras, the types of things that you're talking about, the art components, those types of things, we certainly like to have some lead time. Many of our teachers will willingly and, you know, lovingly integrate that, as long as they know, we do a lot of that work with Rotary, and they're happy to do any of those types of things. We find, in the middle school, we find certain subject matters to integrate it into, in the elementary school, they do it with their classroom teacher. We just need the lead time to know kind of what the expectations are, and then we can, we can set the timeframe with the teachers. We work really closely with our principals to work with their teacher leads.
Okay. So city manager, keep me on point. If we're meeting twice a year, and I haven't heard any no's on twice a year, or not seeing any no's, then, and we work 12 months out of the year, although city council theoretically takes the month of August off and staff gets to work without having to provide council packets, and then once in December, what are the good times for you? What fits in your schedule for the things? Infrastructure, grant planning, we can get that on a calendar, just give me an idea. Go ahead, Frank.
So I, you know, I always favored four times a year, because in the past, years and years ago, we were going two times a year, and it wasn't enough time, and we were finding ourselves two, two and a half hour meetings, really long meetings. And so we bumped it up to four times, but then it got a little out of hand, because there were a lot of people coming in from the community that had Millbrae issues with streets and sewage and water and things like that, and we were round, around and round in circles in a couple of meetings with outside people coming in, which the school districts had nothing to do with. So, you know, I don't know where we're at with that. I'll go along with two. I think I favor four, because we have a lot to talk about. Unless we could format it with two and we get everything done, I'm fine with it.
I kind of like the subcommittee meeting more so, the two structured meetings. I think that's worth pursuing, because that way we can keep up. And then too, if the subcommittees, whoever they are, decide there needs to be another meeting, that would be beneficial.
Yeah, that'll work.
And as for the exact date, I think we can come up with that. I think what's really important to us, too, is the communication, like, when school's going to start, when spring break is, when, that kind of thing. Like, right now, we're approaching awards nights and, you know, graduations and stuff like that. And sometimes, unless we're giving scholarships or something, we don't know. And sometimes unless we're giving scholarships or something, we don't know. But, I mean, if we could exchange that kind of information so we can almost coordinate schedules, I think the mayor said once that, you know, like a community calendar, that's really helpful because then we can know what's happening and.
So on that matter, I can work with Elaine to figure out what's the best process for the, for the council and the mayor. We have a website, of course, and it has our calendar on it. We don't expect you to have to go there and look. It's very easy for us to sync that, to print it and to send it to you so that you have everything well in advance. But to the mayor's point, I'm just gonna chime in. If we want to talk about planning like for next year, if we're talking about the things that councilwoman Pappen brought up, like striping and those types of things, doing that at the beginning of our school year is actually too late. Like we need to plan for next year in like March or April of this year because that's, that's kind of our planning curve. It doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, but just if we're looking at like being conscientious about what we want to actually implement in the following school year, we're well within our way of having all of that, that completed.
Thank you for that. I would say, and I'm gonna throw this out here, it's in terms of other things, it will take more and longer, longer planning. Traffic calming, we all know about the getting kids to school issues. We also know about some of the horrible drivers who are driving way too fast as kids are getting to school and possibly even the return of an electric school bus, which is a national priority now, which would drastically reduce single car traffic on our streets on that. Those things are gonna take a long time. It's not gonna happen quickly. But I'm thinking, so we're in May, we've missed the March window. It took a year to schedule this. City manager, I'm gonna just throw this out here. We go on recess in August and you guys are rolling out school in August. So kind of nice, you can concentrate on your world and, and we can have a vacation maybe. And if we did June, January, that's July, January, is July problematic? You guys go on vacation.
July is our, it's not.
It's your month off.
We don't go on vacation, but it's their kind of off month.
Right, got it.
And it's, it's, the district office is closed.
I'm just gonna try to set some time. What about June, rolling up your school year?
How about September, March? That's exactly what I was thinking.
September, the beginning of the year, right after it started, March, right when we're trying to get things done.
September, March?
And September, subcommittee on other times.
Okay, that looks good. That sounds good. So staff, if we can try to work on that, it took a lot of staff's time. And thank you, Eduardo, for his patience on scheduling, canceling, scheduling, canceling. So if we can just kind of get this locked in and we get used to it. So it'll be at a, at 5:30 on a city council meeting in September, September. Our first September meeting is bearish because we've been off for a month, so usually it's a long meeting. So, but if we can get maybe some of the proclamations done in July ahead of time, September won't be as much. We sometimes have seven or eight proclamations at first meeting in September. So, and that takes time.
What if we just said it was the second meeting of each, like second meeting March, second weekend meeting September, and we always know that and we always plan ahead for it?
City manager, how does that work?
Thank goodness it's that. That works great.
Oh. Okay. So, no, this is great, Gina. Thank you for bringing that up. The former school subcommittee isn't on our current list of committees or commissions, but I do like if we can, like I would, with my BPAC hat, and to be honest, Gina is our MTC hat, which is where the money comes for these programs, to have a meeting with a couple of school board members on bike pedestrian issues. That maybe that's a subcommittee we can have in the meantime and try to line that up. But right now, the city does not have a formal subcommittee. And welcome, Board President Dennis Fama. We are just happy to see you here and we'll still have quorum because these kids, they have to go to school in the morning. Who knew that? So if we don't have anything else in terms of meetings, President Fama, Dennis, we're more informal even with the formal setup. We're gonna try to right now meet twice a year at 5:30 at night before a city council meeting. That way, we're not in the way of your closed door sessions at a, at a school board meeting. Otherwise, we're flexible to that. And we'll figure out how to do it in an environment under the new meeting rules and whatever new meeting rules may come up by September anyway, as Brown Act bills move through Sacramento. So, and then possibly what we will do is have subcommittees between our two parties and hopefully with the high school district. Obviously, bike pedestrian is a high school issue too. Then those subcommittees can fit in between the regular meetings. And then we just have to have a process to report out to the public, especially on the, on the subcommittee meetings.
I'm gonna make a recommendation. I think it's ideal if we can set up the subcommittee ASAP, but I think ideally, the subcommittee should meet sometime in June this year. And I know we plan in advance about stuff, but I'm sure if we meet in June as a subcommittee, there's some things that we can work on for the following year, school year. So there's just some things we can tackle, major things like streets, and I think we can wait until next year. But for this year, I think starting the subcommittee meeting ASAP, and I would say meet in June at least once to kind of chat about things, housing, things that we can do, something immediate in the summer. So just a thought.
Great. City manager, for city council's subcommittees, I don't, I can't remember, do we have to make that a council action? Do we have to vote on that?
Yes, Mayor, you do. And so we can schedule it as early as this coming Tuesday, the 23rd.
So I know right now, I would love to have a subcommittee to work on bike pedestrian issues. So if you guys can, you guys, how informal. If the board could think about that, are there other subcommittees that you think would be helpful from your end or from the city's end with the other hats that we wear?
I think we can get in later.
Well, just if we're gonna do a June meeting and for us, just so that we can think about it, it can come later. Go ahead, Angie.
Well, I think if we have like a BPAC subcommittee, like you were talking about, we already have the field use subcommittee, which is a temporary, and then maybe just a general subcommittee.
A general to work on?
Just any issues outside of those two that come in between.
So BPAC?
At least when I think of us and our side of it, we all have different skill sets and knowledge bases to work on those things. So I think having those three different committees would address the issues and allow us to be on the different committees to make use of our skill sets and backgrounds.
Okay.
Bringing those to the table together.
Let me throw one more thing that came out of a mayor's coordinating council meeting a couple of months ago. One of the PTO, PTA presidents came up and spoke to me about concern of middle school kids. And if there was a way I could help, the city could help create more, get them outside, get them away from their phones, get them socializing on that. And of course, if you guys know me, if there's a cleanup we can do, if there's a tree planting we can do, that is something we could possibly coordinate together and try to get more involvement. I think they were just, you know, they were the, they were young during COVID lockdown. What can we work together on? And maybe that's the mental health one. I mean, that's another topic for today on mental health. Would there be, would that be a committee to work on? Just how we can support our children and adults on mental health? Go ahead, Gina.
Yeah, I think this whole conversation is just things like that more, instead of establishing something right now, it's just an open discussion as to what you guys are thinking of. And we have the, our new chief here, Chief Allen, just, you know, what's happening, tapping with the city. And then it took more formality, not America. It took us so long to get here, I think.
I'm just worried if we wait a year. I hear you. But if we, if it took us a year to get a meeting, if we can lock down some subcommittees for the council, for our perspective, we have to go to a vote in front of the public. I don't know what the school system work is. Let's just throw some ideas out there, get everybody thinking about it. I get requests, probably whoever the mayor is gets requests on mental health quite a bit on that. So I'm thinking that that might be another one.
Can we add? So what are you guys doing in the city? It is on here. What is, what is the school district doing?
Well, first, just to respond to the mayor, yes, for subgroups, it's, it's not, it is an action item that we would have to bring to the board. It's not a formal, but it is something we have to do publicly. And just as a gentle reminder, our board already sits on subcommittees. So to develop like three or four subcommittee, more of those, that may be difficult. I would just very respectfully request maybe like a general committee that then addresses all matters and brings them back to the bigger group, but ultimately, that's for all of you, because otherwise, they'll each be on an additional two committees, which may be a lot. But for mental health, obviously, this is, this is something that is a cornerstone of just about every conversation we're having and not just with our middle school children, our elementary children as well, and our families. Quite honestly, COVID don't have to say, you know, this is, goes without saying that COVID had an impact on, on everyone. And there's been some research of late to indicate that the impact is getting more severe than it was just initially even coming out of COVID. Children that really are having difficulty sort of socializing themselves back into the school setting, parents who are still coming from a place of extreme fear for their child's safety, their, their health safety, that then is impacting the sort of the letting go at home to school type of thing. So in the district, we really have worked and have directed a lot of our, our funding to providing support. So in addition to our counselors that we have at each school, our, our elementary schools share a counselor and they, and then we have psychologists throughout the district, our school psychologists, but we also are contracting with a company titled Cassie, and they are actual, they're, they're certified mental health therapist. So they are on our school sites and have caseloads at each of our schools where they're working directly with our students and our families, quite honestly. And we are doing a lot of referring out. So we've been working really closely with Care Solis. We have been working, we do a lot in-house with our own staff, with our EAP, AEP? Do you remember what it is, Ralph? AEP? Yes, our service for internally, sorry, I always get the acronym incorrect. It's a place where our teachers can go to provide, to get mental health support. We currently, right now, across our district are working with the county office and we've really wrapped, really wrapped our arms around one another as far as support for community. And last night, we had a, a mental health night for our Spanish speaking parents to really talk about tough subjects with their children, all types of subjects. And we have our English version of that next Monday night, May 23rd. We are doing internal work with our staff's healing circles, all types of things. So this is obviously our first and foremost, our concern is the little people, but it's impacting our families, our parents, our community, our teachers, our classified staff. So it is something that we're, I just had a meeting yesterday with a contingent of Taylor teachers where this was the center of our conversation about how do we meet the needs of some of our most at-risk children? And to their credit, it was a conversation around how do we change adult behavior to address the needs of our kids? Because children who struggle, children who come from a trauma-informed background, trauma, you know, they act out in different ways and sometimes it's very difficult to manage and to understand if you have not had those experiences. So we're, we are looking at it from a really like a wraparound perspective about supporting, you know, everyone in the district who, who needs it.
Okay, thank you. Great to know. It sounds to me like going back to Angie's suggestion, then let's just put that into general, the three subcommittees on that.
So Mayor?
Go ahead.
So along those lines, that's fabulous. As far as the wraparound services, that's very interesting to us because the city council and law enforcement and sheriffs and stuff like that, maybe we can assist along those lines. And also as a nonprofit director, it would be maybe helpful to your parents, your, if we really made sure what nonprofits are out there that can help. I mean, that's, we don't advertise ours and I've been giving scholarships from Mills students. These families are living under 15,000 a year. So I think really communicating what services are out there would be helpful to the community and really bringing, again, the more wraparound we can share, I guess, or provide to one another, I think is really the benefit for the entire community. So I'll see if I can get some information and, and it's a matter of educating too, because for mine, it's the front line, the teachers know who's most in need. Schools know who's most in need and just letting them know there are other researchers out there that would, as you said, help the family and help the students. I think those programs you just listed are fabulous.
There's another component that we've integrated, and I will tell you, it's been, it's been amazing. So as you probably know, a lot of children express themselves in writing. And we have a system now, Bark. And anytime a child writes about something that is dangerous to themselves or anyone else, our director of technology gets an alert. And we then, I think Ralph gets the alert as well. So then we are able to contact the proper people who can respond. So without getting into details, we had a Bark alert yesterday for a young student who was experiencing some pretty traumatic matters. And we were able to immediately get an analysis done on this child and contact their parents and get the mental health support that was needed as a result of that. So that's been, that's been a game changer for us.
Great. Okay, fantastic. Move that to that. So kind of looking at that. And we also have quite a few subcommittees too on that, as well as regional committees, which I'm sure some of you serve on regional committees, but how we can coordinate better. Because sometimes when this comes to the mayor's coordinating council, there's not a lot you can do at that level. So that sounds really good. I'm gonna close out this agenda item, saying that we're gonna try to go to meet twice a year, 5:30 before a city council meeting, so we can't schedule any specials before that. And that we, I'm looking at at least three. Field use was never formally adopted in front of city council, it was an ad hoc committee, but I'll let the city manager work out on that. And if there's no other discussion on agenda item 3A, we know we're gonna lose Maggie in about 18 minutes. So Maggie, is there anything else here that would be really important to you that we cover before you have to leave? Knowing that this meeting can be more flexible than a standing trustee or council meeting? If not, we'll go back to the.
Do you have something? Okay, sorry.
So already kind of mentioned three of, actually, we've already mentioned all three of these. Deborah, Tom, do you want to go back to where we've got the agenda and start with reports so we can kind of learn a little bit about each other? In which case, next up is city manager, Tom Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everyone this morning. Before I get started, I'd just like to do a couple of quick introductions, I think starting right to left. Sam Batista, you may or may not know him. He's the Director of Engineering and Public Works. Left of him is Andy Mogason, our Community Development Director, Chief Aiman Allen, our new Bureau Chief here at the City of Millbrae, and of course Hannah Moran, who is our Recreation Director. So just real quick, I'll be, I'll be brief. We have a lot of events coming up, and so I wanted to share those with, with all of you. The two really key projects that we have are the upgrades of Marina Vista Park and Bayside Manor Park. And both of those are in the concept design stage. We've had several community meetings and are really starting to hone in now on our preliminary design. And once we have that from our landscape architects, we'll go out for bid and that will most likely be in the fall and construction to commence either the end of this year or early part of next year. And it's been great feedback in terms of what, what the community needs in those two parks. You're probably familiar with them. If you're not, one is in, on, in the Bayside Manor neighborhood and the other is off of Center Street in the Marina Vista neighborhood. And they've really been neglected over the past probably 30-plus years. And so great improvements coming there. It looks like, Karen, you may have a question?
It's great that you've been asking for feedback from the public, and I just wonder how that's been going. And I would love to be able to sort of introduce that sort of survey to our families within those neighborhoods because those are the ones who are gonna be using it the most. And to whatever extent we can kind of, you know, get that message out so they can provide their feedback, I think that would be great.
It's coming tonight to the Park and Rec Commission. It's coming tonight to the Park and Rec Commission, so I know that's short notice to get it out to more folks. But then it'll be at the city council? Do we know which one?
We do not have a date yet.
Soon. So that's a chance to advertise in PTA newsletters or Parent Square for folks to come give public comment. At this point, the community meetings are done, so the opportunities for public comment are at the. At this point, the community meetings are done, so the opportunities for public comment are at the council meetings and Park and Rec. And then there'll be one more round at Park and Rec and City Council for public comment on that. So we can get those dates to you all, so you can use, spread the word in your channels.
Survey's finished, though?
Oh. Actually, the conceptual design survey goes until May 30th?
It'll go until June 1st.
Oh, great.
So it's going until June 1st.
Yep, sorry about that.
If you go to the park itself, there's a big banner with two R's, that'll take you to those surveys.
I'll email you the links.
And we'll send an email to, to all of you too, so you have...
Yeah, just so we can blast it out, like...
City Manager, question. In the olden days, every Friday, I think a packet used to go out at least to the elementary school kids. But how do you, how do you get information out and is there a timeframe?
So our information now goes out on our, our platform titled Parent Square. And if you have information that you need sent out to our community, as long as you can send it to myself or Jeff Horn, our Director of Technology, in a digital format, or if it's print, we can scan it. And then we simply put that on Parent Square. It takes us about four minutes to upload it and send it out.
And even, we hear a lot about the digital divide, lack of access to broadband. Do we have that problem with our parents and students? So is everybody getting an electronic format?
So currently, we know we have only, we have, we've got it down to, we have twenty-seven parents, five parents now. A lot happened in a week. Five parents across the entire district now who don't have, who have not logged on to Parent Square. So we've been spending the last year connecting personally with our families, helping them register for that. That's our, our primary platform. And it can be accessed from your phone, and everyone has a phone. Or you don't need a desktop or a laptop to be able to access it. So for Lamita Park, we often, in addition to the digital format, we do also send out hard copies just to ensure, and in translation as well. So, but for the most part, everything goes out digitally.
Excellent, very impressive. Congrats.
And if I can add, I believe in Parent Square, you can change the language, right?
Yes, you can have it translated into whatever, it translates into like eighty-seven languages. So you just press your, you, you set your, your language and it comes to you in your language.
Great. Okay, so City Manager, I interrupted you.
Sorry. And then just, just a few more things, and again, I'll be brief. Thursday, May 18th is, is, it used to be called Bike to Work Day, and now it's just Bike to Wherever Day. It's actually been, and so that started, we have an Energizer station and maybe some of the school district employees. So from seven AM to ten AM over at the Caltrain Station. And then also this Friday, May 19th through Saturday, May 20th, we have the Millbrae Art Show. That's actually put on by our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. So in this room, starting at six PM on Friday evening, six to nine Friday evening. And then May 20th, Saturday is eleven to two PM. And then we have, I know you're going to be excited about this, a compost giveaway on May 20th at nine AM. This is over off the Spur Trail on Millbrae Avenue between Palm and Elder. If you may be familiar with our sandbag station, we have a compost giveaway. So I do, I do think that these are some of the things the mayor may have mentioned in terms of how we can actually work together and collaborate to, to get the word out to, to the school district and your students and parents. And then Friday, June 9th at six thirty PM, Millbrae Goes to the Movies. This is our first actual outdoor movie at Central Park, so that's on June 9th starting at six thirty PM. Saturday, June 17th, we're going to have our very first Juneteenth celebration. So Juneteenth is June 19th. It is now a city holiday as well as a federal and state holiday. And so that Saturday, June 17th, here at the Recreation Center, we're going to have a celebration with food, music, entertainment. And it will start at eleven AM. So the Lions Club will be barbecuing, we'll also have different vendors for food selection. Various community groups will be participating and it should be a really fun, educational and entertaining event. And then lastly, our commission and committee vacancies. So we have several commission and committee vacancies. And again, I think if we can get the word out to parents and, you know, through students or through the channels that the school district uses for recruitment, there may be some interest out there. So everywhere from our Planning Commission, Cultural Arts Committee, Park and Recreation Commission, Sister Cities Commission, and our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. So we'll work, we'll work with Deborah and get all this information out and, and work on improving that. And then, yeah, that's it. Spin Bicycles, I don't know if you've noticed, our Spin Bikes, it's a pilot program, we received a grant. And City of Millbrae, City of Burlingame jointly went into an effort with Spin Bicycle. So we have corrals throughout the city that just started this week, so take a, take a spin.
If I could add, add to that, the Youth Advisory Council changes every academic year. So they start up again in September, I believe. All of them are reintroduced. We've had an opening or two openings for middle schoolers. High schools, we get plenty of applicants, we don't quite get as many for middle school, and there's two slots specifically for that. So that's another area, if we can get the word out to make sure that they're, they're active. And I'm just going to throw this out there, the City of San Mateo just recently added youth members, I think they're non-voting, to their Park and Recreation Commission, which I think is a great idea. We're going through our own goal setting, so we'll see what happens in terms of our own formation of our committees and commissions. Didn't make it up to the top of the goals. But I just love that idea of getting some young people onto Park and Rec in whatever process works. So they can say, this is what we really need. On that, Gina?
Yeah, I just want to add to that, too. We also have a grant for bike lane between San Bruno and Millbrae. So that's going to be studied. And then, Tom, I think what's interesting too, if you can enlighten us really quickly on the major developments, like when they're going to start, what's happening at Office Depot, like the Bart Station area, things that are going on right now. And we have housing projects that are in the works. So if you could do that real quick.
Yeah, sure. Just real quick, so Office Depot site, there is a, a project with three hundred and sixty-five housing units and about thirty thousand square feet of retail. The developer, the, all the entitlements have been approved. And the last timing that we received from the development company, which is Trammell Crowe, they'll start demolition sometime in late summer, early fall of the Office Depot site. And that'll be the full block, so from El Camino, Metal Glen to, to Broadway. And it's going to be great, there's some, some public, publicly owned land on Broadway. So part of the design is a nice outdoor plaza that, the way the retail is designed, so restaurants can open up to, to the plaza. And so really nice project. Our planning department did a great job working with the architect to really have a high standard. And it's just a beautiful building. El Rancho Hotel, that's another project, housing project that was approved, that's about three hundred and fifty housing units. That project will, again, I think Andy scheduled to break ground also in the fall. So those, those two large projects, that's right around seven hundred additional housing units. Metal Glen, El Camino area for our downtown. Coming off of 101, you've probably seen at Rollins Road, the structural steel's coming out of the ground. That's that eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet of new life science campus, which will bring in about three thousand employees. The one company that is, is doing the structural steel right now has three hundred thousand square feet pre-leased to a company called Icon, which is out of the East Bay, and they're moving their corporate headquarters here to Millbrae. So some exciting things happening, both in terms of not just the needed housing, but economic development as well. You know, working with the city council and the community. We all know the, the housing need, housing demand, but the other aspect that I think Millbrae's done a great job on in the council and the policy development is economic development and job creation and balancing that. Because that's how we get revenue. We need to, we need to have a healthy revenue stream. And so anyway, so we're continuing that the city council adopted the housing element. That's right now at the state level, waiting certification. The state mandate, you may be familiar with the term RENA, R-H-N-A, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Every seven years, municipalities in California get a number from their regional governments and state housing and community development with a goal of how many housing units that, that you're, you're required to develop. Over the last four years, the state has been very heavy-handed in adopting legislation, forcing to the greatest extent possible that cities do develop housing. And they've taken a lot of local control away from actually city councils in terms of housing approvals, location of housing. But anyway, with that, our, our housing element allows for thirty-five hundred housing units between now and 2030. The state mandate on our RENA numbers, the goal is twenty-two hundred, so we have a, you know, a lot of capacity. And again, we like to say, cities don't build housing, we just create the opportunity for housing development. But with all of that, our infrastructure's strong, we have our development impact fees. So, so new development is paying its fair share for impact on our, on our park system, water, sewer, roads. I know school district, unfortunately, you're hamstrung by state law from ninety-eight. What you can charge on a per-square-foot basis doesn't even come close to, to what the, what the need is. But anyway, so we're, we're a small little city that's actually doing some good things, especially, I'm, I'm proud of the economic development efforts. So I'll stop rambling and...
I would only, hold on, I would only add to that, that we have to go out for a fire assessment either in 2023 or 2024, that's to fund the fire department. And I should have started this first with a congratulations on Measure A. Congratulations on that, I just saw it in the Daily Journal, I'm catching up. So glad that that went well. But that's another thing historically and for the public, that we would coordinate so that not all of us are going out for funding at the same time, and then we all lose on that. So that's coming up.
And just for information, the fire assessment will be a continuation of the current fire assessment. And because it's a property-based assessment, we don't have to wait for the normally scheduled election. So we can, we can go out at any time. We're probably going to go at the end of this year, just in case, so we have next year if we have to do it again. But hopefully we won't.
And Angie, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Oh, no, I was just, a little details of, on top of what Tom was saying and what Gina mentioned in terms of the, sorry, I'm blinking, the...
It's seven in the morning.
The housing right by Lamita Park, so the, El Rancho, I'm sorry, the El Rancho Development, when all that construction's happening, that's along the, the school routes to Lamita. And then the bike path in San Bruno connecting to Millbrae, that's all along Monterey and Marina Vista, Center Street, and then San Anselmo and meeting right in front of Lamita there. So connected and close to the schools.
I think we want to be sensitive to the impact to the schools. So you're communicating with us when these developments happen. And even after they happen, with three thousand new employees coming in, what, I mean, we're going to have to be careful with children. And so really open lines of communication here. If you guys see something that's happening that's not working, you know, let us know, because that's important. We have to integrate the entire community when these things happen. A lot of building goes on, sometimes kids get curious, all kinds of things. So please, let's keep those lines of communication open.
Okay, well, thank you, City Manager. Superintendent French?
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to thank Elaine and Eduardo. I know that we've spent many, many, many emails and phone calls trying to arrange this meeting, so I really appreciate your tenacity. And I'd like to introduce Ralph Cram is here with us today, our Chief Business Official. So he's here, listening to all of the, the new building that Tom is talking about, which we're super excited about. So far, it's not yielding a lot of kids in our demographic studies. So we're hoping that people either move in and then have children to bring to our schools, or they're, bring their grandchildren or something with them that we just don't know about yet. But we're excited about it, and I think it is really exciting to hear about, especially that Office Depot project. Sounds like it's going to be gorgeous. So there's a lot going on in Millbrae. And first and foremost, I'd just like to talk about our community block parties that we just had. We had two of them, our first one was April 19th at Lamita Park. And we hosted our block party there for Lamita Park and Green Hills families. And it was a, really a dual purpose. Primarily, we wanted to engage our community with our LCAP, so our Local Control Accountability Plan. And part of the requirements legislatively in the LCAP is that you have community engagement. And it's not, you know, it's not over tantalizing. So people don't always want to sit around a table and talk about, you know, our LCAP goals. So we developed these community block parties, I want to give a ton of credit to the team. It was a, a vision that I just said, I want, I want a carnival without a Ferris wheel. And I just want people to have fun and have good food and be able to talk about our, our goals in the community. And we just went all out. We had the Peninsula Humane Society there with dogs, and Mr. Softy was there. We had pizza for dinner. We had, most importantly, our children performing from our schools that were represented at each of them. We had our teachers out doing crafts and games with the kids. We had our LCAP tables. It was just a great, a great, two great events. Our first one at Lamita Park, we had close to six hundred participants, community members who came out. And it was just so fantastic to see everybody in one place celebrating our children singing and dancing and, and just having a good time. Our second one was April 26th at Taylor, and that was hosted for Spring Valley Meadows and Taylor, another fantastic event. We had all of the same, ICAM was there at both of them. One Martial Arts came out with their, with their famous cotton candy machine at Taylor. And similarly, Mr. Softy and pizza and children performing and our LCAP tables, Peninsula Humane Society. Just a great event. So we've done our after-action review, we're looking at how we make it even better next year. Last night at the MEF Board Meeting, I spoke with MEF about, we really wanted to do community partnerships. We wanted to enlarge this to community partnerships next year. So we're looking at having PTA, PTOs, MEF represented, we'd love to work with the city. This year, we, was our inaugural event, so we wanted to just sort of try it out and see how it went. It was just a robust celebration and really successful, tremendous parent feedback. And actually, we did end up getting a lot of feedback on our LCAP goals, which was our initial intention. So it really helps us to hear directly from our families, our communities, how we're doing with our five goals that represent all areas of our work, our mental health work, our social, social, emotional, our academic work, of course, and attendance work, our work with our EL students. So we're really excited about, about that, and look forward to that planning for next year. We, as a cabinet, are talking about, we're so grateful for MEF and PTA and PTO. They do so many wonderful events for our communities. But as a district, coming out of COVID, we really want to hold our, our own events that encompass everybody but are hosted by us to celebrate our community, whether, and definitely our community block parties. But whether it be movie nights or celebrations of, you know, once you get kids out there dancing and singing, you get, and if you have, I've learned, if you have Mr. Softy somewhere local, you're, you're going to get a good turnout. So we're looking at our planning and, and how we can really enhance the work that we're, our community outreach as a school district. It's, it's so vital. And of course, at the end of the year, everyone is so incredibly busy just doing the good work of celebrating children. And so we constantly are having events, like it feels like almost daily. Of course, we're all looking forward to our promotions that will begin on May 31st. Our promotion schedule begins May 31st. Our schools do a good job of rotating kindergarten and fifth grade. If you've never been to a kindergarten promotion, it is the cutest thing you can ever see. So I would suggest that you come out, I'll send you all the schedule. And then they continue June 1st. And then Taylor has its own day of promotion, only Taylor does promotion on the last day of school, which is June 2nd. So we will send you the schedules and the times so that you know when our, and where our promotions are taking place. And then we are also excited that we have, with a lot of our one-time funding, we've been able to really offer some robust summer school programming and in, in the last couple of years. And this year, one of the components I, I really appreciated being a unified superintendent in my past is that we always provided eighth graders an opportunity to transition over the summer to the high school. And so I, I started working with the team this year, and I said, you know, we should be doing that for our fifth graders because it's a change. And it's, and sometimes, in some respects, it's a bigger change, more for the parents sometimes than the kids, sending your children to middle school. So really, really, really thrilled about our fifth grade transition program that we're having at Taylor. It's a total of four weeks, but it's, it's two two-week sessions. And we have a great, I mean, we have a lot of fifth graders attending. And I really just want to do a shout-out to our Taylor staff because initially, you know, everyone's tired, teachers are tired at the end of the year. And they really have stepped up and are breaking it up so that teachers will be welcoming kids. kids. It's not going to be a traditional summer school. It will be, there will be portions of it that are academic in nature, but it's really a celebratory event. It's a transition event, tours of the schools, getting to meet the teachers, having a parent night, just really creating some ease of transition for those children who, even, you know, most importantly, for kids who are the oldest sibling in their home, it's, have never been to Taylor, having an opportunity to buy their PE clothes and learn to do their PE locker, all those things that create stress and anxiety for incoming sixth graders without a big crowd around. And then, of course, there will be an academic portion. So we're really looking forward to that. And then we're hosting summer schools as well at Taylor Middle School, Lamita Park, and Spring Valley. So that's really exciting. In our planning for next year, I'm sure that you all know about the TK initiative and legislation across the state. And so this year we had TK at Green Hills and Lamita. We are expanding next year for, with another TK, TK class at Spring Valley. We do anticipate by the following year that we'll have a TK class at each one of our schools. And then we also have preschool at Meadows and we are adding an additional preschool class. So we're really excited about that. So just lots of really good things happening and planning for our next year. And I just want to thank our staff. I want to thank our board of trustees for their tenacious leadership. It's, it always, it's, it's not always easy, right? But it's exciting. And right now we have a lot of really happy kids. I think there's 14 days of school. I know I was told yesterday that there's a countdown has begun for the adults. I think there's 14 days of school and it's exciting. There's, there's a nice feel on each of the campuses. So I'll make sure to get you our calendars. It would be really, I think you'd enjoy our coffee with the principals that happen monthly at each of our schools. You learn a lot about what's going on. Of course, our events, right now there's lots of talent shows and all of, you know, showcasing what the kids have been doing all year. So I'll, I'll make sure to get that schedule to you as soon as possible.
Great.
What is the enrollment?
2,117. Am I right? What? Correct me.
2100.
2100, oh, okay. Well, I'm hopeful that it's going to be, we're trending this way.
But just in case the public is watching, all schools are trending down. All districts are trending down.
Not, most. I would say a large majority of the schools in California are, 90% are trending down. There are some school districts in areas that are potentially, you know, more affordable in California, which potentially is an oxymoron, but are trending differently. So pandemic was hard on California. People left and didn't return.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, can I ask you how many languages are spoken in our local schools?
How many languages? Bye. Thank you. Well, primarily we have English, obviously, and then Spanish and Mandarin, Tagalog. I don't know exactly the number of Arabic. I don't know exact, I know like some of our, the ones where we get asked for translation services. Yes, that would be our biggest, our, our five biggest or two, yes, that we get asked. We do work really, really hard. There is law around, after you have a percentage of students in a district, you are required by law to, to, to translate in that language. We have not met that threshold. However, we do try really, really hard to translate almost everything in Spanish and Mandarin. It's why we love Parent Square. We send everything out on Parent Square because parents can just tap that language and they get it in whatever language they want. So we try really, really hard to put everything through Parent Square. But we do have a few Arabic families or who speak Arabic and we've been able to get some translation services for them. We know in advance, we can work with a contractor who can come out and provide translation services in, in any language.
Just a quick question. Do you track special needs students that have to be accommodated with this impact on the school district at this point?
Yes, definitely. So we actually, I just was editing it last night. In the introductory document of our LCAP, it tells exactly what our demographics are. And so we are, and I don't, I don't want to misquote them publicly, but I can give that to you as well. I think that's important for you to know. So it, it breaks it down by ethnicities as well as socio-economic students with a second language as well as our students with special needs.
I knew that obviously reading is huge for you guys. I was able to read kind of to the PK class at Green Hills. So we have one PK class, which, and are we one of the few in the, in the North County?
So I'm not sure how many are.
And just tell people what PK is because I wouldn't say it the right way.
So you're talking about our preschool class. We, you're talking about preschool or transitional kindergarten?
It was special needs children at Green Hills.
So that's our, that's our PK class. So we have a, we have a special needs preschool class, which is, which we're adding the second that. So those are.
Green Hills Meadows or Green Hills?
Green Hills. We're, we have, we have one at Green Hills. We're adding one at Meadows.
At Meadows, okay.
So we try to look at, you know, the logistics of the families and then try to place our classes so that our families, you know, don't have to be driving for those more specialized classrooms.
Not all school districts have.
It's, it's the television age.
Excuse me. Your, your graders, not all school districts have a preschool class that needs and needs of students with special needs.
It was, it was very impressive to go there. And, and then again, with my other hat, with my Lions hat or my Leo's hat, if any of your teachers, she was, she was not complaining. I don't want it to, she was just saying how much it costs a teacher to set up a brand new classroom with a brand new set. And with that group of special needs, how the theme changes every month. And to me, I say, oh, that's an opportunity for our youth clubs to possibly help and, you know, grow their humanity on that. So, and that's another thing that we could potentially work on in the future.
Of course.
I was there on Dragon Day and thankfully I brought Dragon Love. No, I was there on Dinosaur One, so I brought Dragon's Love tacos.
Oh, very fun, very fun. Certainly, I think one of the things I'd love to offer, and while collaboration in all the other areas is really important, I think the, the way you really get a feel for what's happening is to walk through schools with me. And I'd love to provide that invitation. You can come in pairs because of the Brown Act or you can come singularly. But I'm happy to take you through, through classrooms. I think you then really get to see where the rubber meets the road. You know, I was a teacher for many, 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 many years and my hat goes off to teachers in today's world every single day. It's, it's an amazing profession, but the challenges are, are deep. And, and also so are the celebrations. So, but it's great and I love like reading in classrooms and those types of things is fantastic. But actually walking classrooms and getting to see the intricacies of our curriculum and some of the work we're doing with SEL and that type of stuff. My daughter's always loved to be able to do that with you.
So I had been reading about loneliness and loneliness can be almost as dangerous to our population, especially to our senior population than some of the other health issues that we've been looking at. And President Fama, I know you, well, and Lynn too, probably all of you were always really good at going into schools and reading and then COVID hit. And I don't know when you've got the bandwidth to bring that back. Gina is our liaison to our senior commission and I am worried about seniors. And there was a new housing project down the county and they actually set up a preschool with senior living above it. So the seniors can come in and read. It's a really good way of trying to solve a lot of problems in one location. So maybe that's just something we can think about in the future. I would love, I don't have time right now, but I'll step down as mayor in a few months and have a little bit more time. I would love to go into the classroom and read because it's pretty fun. And you get to see little ones. And again, we don't do lion finger painting, but my job was to go to each kindergarten class and bring them to the cafeterias. And what could be better than that? So I miss doing those kinds of things and getting to see that, getting to see their young faces. Go ahead.
School safety, school safety, since we have the, our chief here, I know last year just the growing number of incidents here. How is the school district feeling about school safety? What's happening? How can we help? What's going on?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to chime in and then Ralph's here and of course our trustees, our, and Chief Allen, I just want to give a shout out to Chief Allen. I just met him a few months ago and I, I've, I've been doing this work for a long time and I've, I've never been as grateful for the relationship that we've developed with our police and our sheriff and super couldn't do it without him. We are really looking at safety as a, as a holistic approach. And so Jeff Horn, who is our Director of Educational Technology, he is also our safety lead, as well as Ralph and Ann Smith, and they have done a fantastic job. We have regular safety meetings that involve our schools as well as our community. I know that we've extended it just this last month was extended one of our sheriff's.
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
So we have our regular meetings and we invite Sergeant Curry to be in attendance with us. So that collaboration, we're really excited about being able to communicate back and forth with the sheriff's department on safety at schools. And there are recommendations and looking at all of our protocols and making sure we're in line with how they operate under regulations.
And we're, and super grateful for that. We want to be able to extend that relationship. We are also doing a few things right now. We're running a prototype at the school district, at the actual district office to work out all the kinks with a doorbell type approach at the front door with a camera so that we can visualize who's at the, at the door. We're looking to bring something very similar to each of our school sites to, for added security. We are also embarking on our camera project. I look at trustee Barrow because that's his baby, likely starting at Taylor Middle School this summer with that project. We've also been putting cameras on our school sites. So at the other school sites, it's mostly for the, the entry point. At the middle school, we're, I'm, I'm rooting and begging for hallway cameras because it really helps with incidents with kids. It's much nicer to be able to pull up the, a reverse of a camera and show that to a child and their parent to say, it really did happen. It's right here on camera. And then we're looking at, you know, there's, there's some details that we won't share publicly because we're on TV. But we are actually, I've been working with President Fama about having a, a special workshop with our trustees to be able to talk about the intricacies of some of the safety work that we're doing kind of behind the scenes that obviously we wouldn't share to ensure optimum safety for physical safety for our schools, our staff, and most importantly, our children. But when we talk about safety, we also look at academic safety. We look at emotional and social safety as well. So those are some of the internal components that we're looking on when we talk about closing the achievement gap. We look about mental, mental health supports, those types of things. So we're looking at it from a robust perspective.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay. We do not have the high school district here, have not met Mr. Booker yet, but hopefully we will get that in the future. And moving, supposing that I have number two, number three, we've already done A. We've sort of done mental health awareness initiatives. Does anyone want to add to that? Either I have to be or three B.
I would just add that today that this is Mental Health Awareness Month.
So we are bringing a resolution at our board meeting tomorrow night or tonight. It's Tuesday, it's tonight regarding that. So just know that we're paying specific attention. And also really to Gina's point, I'd like to talk with you Gina offline. I don't think we ever have enough partners when it comes to be able, being able to provide support for our kids. We're grateful for the partner, the partners who, who we currently have, but we're always looking for ways in which we can support our families. Our families have varying needs and it's just, and loneliness is, is one capacity that we've seen from the pandemic, kids that have not come out of that isolation. So paying really close attention and always looking for additional partners.
City manager, you didn't mention it, but today is the city's mental health training day. So some of us will be running down to there after that.
I thought there was a grant or.
Available that, that mental health training for the adults that would be able to, you know, identify signs of distress and be able to intervene. I know that it was open to certain.
It was kind of weird because I signed up and then had to do a survey. I'll know a little bit more about it. And just so that everybody knows, we have a community member, Jean Perry, who a lot of us know through the CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team, but she's on the County Commission for Mental Health. So she also brings those resources back. She did a program last year for teenagers to talk about suicide and what you can and cannot say. So we've got a good partner in there. And if need be, we can bring that up at a mayor's coordinating council meeting in a week and a half.
Yeah, I mean, I think you had forwarded me something about.
Oh, I had, yeah, ways that we can try to tighten up that relationship, make sure that we've got.
Yeah, but there was very specific opportunities for, you know, the adults to be trained on mental health. And I think it was open and then I think it's now open to city councils and various groups, right? Because I think I got an email on, on various commissions for that. But I know that there were more programs and I, I would just love to find out a little bit more and whether or not it makes sense to kind of, you know, open that up to our community, especially since there are many parents who's talking about mental health amongst youth and being able to identify certain things, to be able to see a youth in distress and know what to do.
Yeah, so the meeting is tomorrow, or the training is tomorrow, actually.
Oh, good. And I'm not late.
Mental health for first aid. And it's open to, obviously all of our employees. We open it up to commission and committee members due to capacity. But I do think that there are still a few slots open. So I know it's late notice, but anybody that's interested from the school board, school district certainly. But this is the first time that we've done this and it is through a grant. So I think definitely more to come in this, in this area.
I think universally, we knew about it before COVID. COVID just really focused our attention into the greater need for that. We didn't add, we're also creating a social equity commission. And what their scope of work will be is still under discussion by the Subcommittee of Councilman Fung and Vice Mayor Goodman on that. But hopefully some stuff will come out of that too, the resources for that. But you've already talked about some great work you've done in reaching out to our harder to reach community.
I think that this year we did six, five or six parent nights that were built around, not necessarily mental health, but obviously was encompassed support for parenting, those types of things. This year, what we've done is in our LCAP surveying, under our parent engagement, we actually surveyed our parents to say, what type of educational series do you want? So we've been able to look at that. And now we're working with our partners to develop our series for next year so that our parents can, and we're looking at a way to maybe provide some transportation for parents who can't, because we host them at different schools. So making sure that it doesn't alienate any, any members of our community of transportation is an issue. So we have that for our families as well.
That brings to mind that apparently Milbrae was designated this in 2021. We didn't find out until January, February, 2023 that all along El Camino Real, two blocks on either side, we are now considered under the City and County Association of Governments for Samatelle County, an equity focus area. And some of that is based on your, your family income and the percentage you have to pay for housing and your inability to have a car. And we have one of the highest, this is kind of a good and a bad thing, one of the highest ratios of residents without cars. So along that corridor, it's point seven, where the average in the county is point three, something on that. So that does point to the need for us. I look at that wells because we are fairly transit heavy, as long as people living along El Camino can use the bus. We're not very good at getting up and down our east and west on that. But just know that we are an equity focus area. And if you're applying for grants that come through the county, that should get us more points. I, I'm really hoping it's going to help us with bike pedestrian grants because we just, we keep year after year after year, not getting those grants. So anything that will help us score better and get those services on that. Any, okay. So if Gina, go ahead.
Just the next topic, filter.
Okay. Safe routes to school. Go ahead.
So safe routes to school. I found out the grants actually go to public. The applications end up at Public Works. They're sent there. So I'm not sure what the communication is between Public Works and the schools, but I want to make sure we take advantage of those. It was surprising to me to find out that first they go to Public Works. What's the line of communication between our school district and Public Works, please?
Yeah, so real quick, I'll introduce Sam Batista here in a few seconds. But so those grants are funded through CCAG, the County City Association of Governments. And they do come to Public Works. There, there have been two walk audits recently in preparation for the grants, one at Green Hills and one at Meadows Elementary School. And Sam is here to provide more information. So, Sam.
Good morning, mayor, council members, superintendent and board trustees. Sam Bautista, you're Public Works director. And I just wanted to say that when it comes to these grants, you know, we, we hear about them and you hear about them. And what we want to really do is we want to collaborate with the school district because you should have a Safe Routes to School coordinator. And I, you know, I'm pretty new to the job now. So we would like to coordinate and, and create applications that are strong and presented strong to the, the funding agency. So as I said, Public Works will hear about grants that come up. And usually we would apply for active transportation grants, one Bay Area grants. And then on your end, you do hear back from your, your, your agencies for Safe Routes to School. So I really do want to create a collaborative relationship with the school district so that we can, you know, help assist in your, your grant applications. You know, we have expertise in trying to create or preparing cost estimates, you know, and making and reviewing the project descriptions to make it a more holistic, strong application, not just for the school district, but also for the pedestrians and bicyclists here in the city. So thank you.
I, I would only add that Safe Routes to School funding is actually more complicated. The C CAG gives money to the Department of Education, Samhitaught County, am I getting it correct, Department of Education? And then they have a whole Safe Routes to School program that meets monthly. And then the Samhitaught County Transportation Authority funds a little bit of it that way. And then often C CAG might add, so this year they added a couple extra hundred thousand dollars to it. But historically, it's the school district that has to do the, the request. This year, I'm just pleased that it happened because before we would, the only other walk audit, the only other Safe Routes to School money that ever came to Millbrae was when Dana Lujan was president, was principal up at Meadows. But she had come from the Safe Routes to School program. And she and I were also on county BPAC along with Marge Cola Pedro. So it, it really does help who gets to sit at these tables and gets to do the scoring to get this. So I'm firmly in support of that's one of the actions we can work on, on that. I think we also have with some of our new corporate partners, a desire to want to work out into the community. So last summer, Silicon Valley Bike Coalition had their first ever conference outside of Santa Clara County. They had it here. It was done in less than two months, but they were hoping to do a pop-up bike lane. And Longfellow, for example, said, we would love to help fund that. So I think as we evolve this program, and we need to do more of those, it's so hard to get government grants, but we have these new corporate partners coming in. And, you know, safety of our children is of course paramount to all of us on that. So.
Sam, I'd really like to see this coordination. I mean, it just takes you and the school district really fast because these grants are going to become available. So discovering what the needs are, and we constantly hear how the connection between the west or east side and the west side needs to be improved for our kids to get to the library and all of that. So I think it's just two people here, you and the school district. The sooner we can meet to really define the needs is important. Instead of, you know, just kind of guessing, Public Works does a great job of restriping and things like that. But if we could be a little more focused, I think we have a greater opportunity to proceed. And I'm going to encourage you both, once you get those needs, let's reach out to the C CAG staff and see, this is our plan. How can we improve it so we have better chances even before you submit to get these grants?
Again, the grants don't come through C CAG. They come through the Department of Education.
Do though.
Hasn't come, well, let's talk. Because I'm the chair of the county BPAC and it hasn't come through us.
I understand.
Okay.
So C CAG just had a meeting and that's how I found out and went through Public Works. So some funding is going to be available. And we'll just see, we just want to take advantage of what we can to help the community.
Historically, we've never qualified because we weren't a priority equity community. So we simply flat out did not qualify on that. So at least they're trying to make some changes. All right, anything else on Safe Routes? Millbrae's BPAC meets at six thirty, six, six o'clock on the third Tuesday. So we meet tonight and every third Tuesday. And it would be great, again, if we can facilitate coordination on that one too. Moving on to field maintenance and use agreement. And I'm not sure, city manager Angie, and I don't know who from the school was on that committee.
Go ahead, Chair. House of Negotiations, Joe.
Yeah, I just, I put this on the agenda just to update the full board and full city councils. So we're, we're right in the middle with the two subcommittees exchanging information with the, with the goal to be able to get a new agreement solidified and adopted by the board and the city council before the agreement expires middle of September. So things are moving long productively and we hope soon to be bringing the agreement both to the city council and to the board in the next couple of months.
I guess I'm going to add, because we are unique here in Millbrae with a moratorium on artificial turf on that. And the artificial turf, we're in a temporary moratorium. It expires in December. It went to park, or it went to planning commission last night, are ongoing, how you could apply turf, that's more for residents on there. And we are, we do have our own lobbyists now and the bills that our lobbyist is watching and working on in Sacramento, the biggest one is S V four seven, six forty-six, which is to give back local control under drought planning. The state in several laws said, because of droughts, we're taking away local control to stop drought tolerant planting and the use of artificial turf. So this six forty-six would remove artificial turf from, the backward way of saying this, it would allow local governments to take more control over the use and implementation of fake grass. I won't go into it here, but the huge, there's a huge range of environmental to illness to pollinator issues associated with fake grass. But that bill is moving, it went on a seven zero vote out of committee and is now in suspense file and will be discussed on the eighteenth, hopefully moving out of suspense, which will give us control on that. I know that there's a lot of pressure on schools or a lot of, hey, here's this grant for schools for artificial turf, but we do have a moratorium. All right, moving, anything else? Angie, I know you're on that subcommittee. Okay.
I don't have any details to add.
All right, we've, moving on to number four, city council and trustee comments. And I'm going to look for council members, make sure they have an opportunity. This is our first time getting a hang of it. Can I pick on Frank?
Is it on?
It is.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to be here today. I'm glad that everybody's here in the same room together finally. I know that communication is really key to a two-meeting template. So I liked the idea about subcommittees because we need good, clear communication constantly. So if we're going to do two meetings, I stress that. Good to hear about everything going on and I'll pass it on to President Fama.
Question, you're always very involved for the eighth graders barbecue. Is that happening?
Yes, we're, Wayne Lee and I are doing the barbecue.
Okay.
Yes.
City council, in this unique situation, all five of us are lions. And so Frank, if you need help, let us know.
I do need help.
And council, if you haven't done it, it actually is pretty fun.
Yeah, come out.
And what date is that?
I believe it's June.
Thirty first.
Ninth.
June ninth?
No, no, that's for moving night, I'm sorry.
I know somebody said Taylor eighth grade, June second.
I think it's the thirty first.
June second? Okay.
But that's, that's graduation.
All right, give it to me, superintendent, give it to me. Come on.
Is it the thirty first?
May thirty first. May thirty first.
And where?
Central Park.
Central Park.
Central Park, yes. No, Central Park. Just, we're just making sure we follow all the rules with having food off campus.
Okay, Dennis.
Thank you. Is this working? Okay. I just want to say this is a terrific meeting. It's a format that we tried a couple of years ago. I don't think we organized ourselves really well around that. And this seems to be much more on point. And so I'm, I'm very happy to be here because when people ask me, what's going on in Millbrae? It's not just the schools, it's not just the city, it's everybody in this room. And I think it's important that we, as Frank mentioned, communication. And not only that, not only communicating, but assuring that we support each other, we endorse each other, and we work together towards, towards what's good for the entire community. We never think of ourselves as just the school district. We serve a population that, that we're proud to serve, but in doing that, we're trying to serve the entire community. And with all these partners here today, there's no reason why we can't succeed. And so I'm so glad that we've reinstituted this and that I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Karen.
Well, I'll just echo what Dennis just said because I just think it's really valuable to have us all in the room and there's so much that we can do together. We are all serving the same population and we need to be better at sort of coordinating and working together on that.
Thank you. Gina.
Yeah, real quick, thank you everybody for being here. The wealth of information was amazing, what's going on here. Moving forward and not for discussion today, I really appreciate the joint safety measures throughout the city. Getting on to sustainability, I hope we can work together on many of those issues because they impact us all. And really communication between bond measures or whoever's going to the ballot, the earlier the better. I congratulate you on measure A and it was really fun to work on that. But the prior measure, the council didn't even know you guys had about measure going till after it was already going. So hopefully this coordination is really going to benefit everyone and we look so forward, at least I do, working with you. Because, I mean, this is a great relationship and the more we know about one another, the better. So I'm excited that we're doing it again.
Anders.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. It's wonderful to have an opportunity to meet in such a setting so that we could find more common ground to work together on things that we ultimately here serve the same constituency here. A moment ago, superintendent mentioned that there is some translation services requirement based on the percentage of the residents. I would love to get some clarification on it. You know, we've been using wordly to begin our multilingual access to the entire city. You know, and all the meetings that we've been running and hopefully will bring about a better public engagement because we have been having folks coming into our city and speaking a language of, of their own native tongue and being able to listen and being able to communicate in their own languages. It's extremely important for public engagement. And I certainly believe, you know, if we're serving the same constituency, that there's definitely a lot of room for that collaborations. So we'd love to work on that, have an opportunity to do that. But that's so far what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just a couple of little things, the block parties were wonderful. I went to both of them. And I think in all my years with the kids in school here, that might have been some of the first inner school events. And I think it was really special and really fun to have that cross-school celebrations together and agree they were such a great, great success. And also, yes, I echo the congratulations on measure A. I enjoyed canvassing for that and talking to folks and hearing from support from all folks across the community, even, you know, some of our seniors and some of the folks that sometimes prefer to opt out of this. It was great to get to talk to some folks that really supported it. The, yes, I'm really excited about this collaboration and getting these groups going again. Like everyone said, we have so much we're both working on and to increase those lines of communication, to cross-share through each other's channels, what's happening in our different programs, I'm very excited about. As different topics came up, I made a list of all the different topic areas that we've talked about collaborating. It's pretty long, so we have a lot of great work we can do together. One more I'll add to that list that didn't come up today is disaster preparedness. I think that's something we both work on individually and there could be some great collaborations there. But I'm very excited about how we can continue working together in all the ways that we can support each other to be holistic as a community. So thank you.
Angie, thank you for keeping that list. I've had a lot of, the mayor always has a chance to do more talking. I would add two things that I forgot. Thanks, Gina. Under bike and pedestrian, one of the things that we're learning in terms of grant, and it counts in the grant scoring, is how many accidents. So I want to thank trustee Chin, who's been, keep me informed. I caught up on old email and heard that a little boy was hit right down the street from my house. And quite often, as a former cyclist myself, we as kids, sometimes we don't tell our parents, let alone tell the authorities. But it's the way we know we've got data and we might know that there's an intersection, maybe it needs trees or bushes being trimmed back. But one of the things we found at the county BPAC meeting is that some cities are much better at counting minor incidents or severe ones on that. And all of that comes through in the grant process. So I hope that together we can work on making sure that our parents, our people know that, yes, a car hit the back wheel of a teenager, he fell, but he had a helmet on hopefully. And, you know, there weren't that many injuries. We still need to report it on there. I say that because I got hit when I was a teenager at Poplar and Taylor. So I'm, I'm pretty aware of what happens in, in the neighborhood around here. So really, I hope that that's something that we can work on. Angie, you and I can talk about who might be in the, the, the general committee and who might just be bike pedestrian oriented on there, on that one. And then I made the mistake of putting the bike rodeo, which we haven't had since 2019, on city goal setting and it didn't move forward. But hopefully we can come up with a way. Chief Ammons, one of your predecessors, Chief Kunkel, who's my superhero, he helped us put together two bike, the second bike rodeo, and we handed out over 600 helmets. And what I am seeing now is a lot of young ones on bicycles, yay, no helmets. A lot of kids, little ones, I'm going to say tweens and under, on scooters, no helmets. So that's another thing I'd love for us to work together. You know, the sad thing is they took away the state law that requires adults to have helmets. So we're not modeling behavior to our young people, which is really a shame. But what we can do on that, and I'm hoping that maybe even though it didn't make it to Millbrae's goal setting, we'll come up with a way in partnering with that. And, and the city manager, and I don't want to commit him, we're not committed to anything as maybe a disaster preparedness bike event at the same time, same people, same booths on there. And, you know, we can't go and ask for money now from corporations without putting it on our own forms, but I think there might be some corporate partners who could bring in a bike repair. That's the hardest thing to get at the bike workshops, not the helmets, because the highway patrol provided the helmets, over 600 of those puppies. They weren't the, they weren't really cool ones, but they work. But to bring in the, the company that comes and does bike maintenance, bike repair, and that's hugely popular. I mean, it's sold out all day.
This Saturday.
The library hosted it.
Oh, did the, oh, they had their own, oh, I didn't know about.
So the county libraries hosted it and it was at Millbrae Library this Saturday.
Did not know on that. Cool.
I don't know, I didn't actually go, but I did speak to a library.
It just shows we have more coordination to do. As we come back from COVID, more coordination. Super to hear that, Karen, on that. Thank you. But, and again, thank you for letting me know and to the family of the young man that was hit, thoughts and prayers. And I hope he's up and back at school soon on that. So I have nothing else. Anything else? Staff, you've heard us blather. Anything that you want us to know? Hannah, our bike pedestrian person is Hannah and an engineer, and I forgot his name. Armando Mora is our, our city engineer working on our bike pedestrian committee. And if you can, tonight, our committees are not, are we zooming BPAC? Did we zoom BPAC last time? Okay, so we're, we're back in person, but not hybrid on that. But we'll try to figure out how we can get, keep each other informed and partnering on that. City manager, Debra, anything in closing?
No, I just wanted to thank you all for your support of measure A. I've not said anything publicly yet because I'm waiting until June second when it's official, official, but thank you for saying that. And I know that there is some preliminary discussion to, to councilwoman Pappin's point about a bond measure in 2024. I'm not going to get out in front of the board, but I know it's been conversation. So, and I know you said you're doing your fire assessment. So we'll be, we'll be chatting about that soon. It's going to be here sooner than we know it.
Highly critical.
Yes.
Very, very critical, that one. On the, on the subject of Measure A, you know, I hesitate to touch anybody's signs because it may end up in the paper. You've touched a sign, the Measure A signs are up. If you guys have permission, I mean, I can walk my neighborhood. And Karen, I see your husband more than I see you walking the neighborhood. But maybe we could just get those signs picked up. Usually, we start getting, hey, no one's picked up the signs. But I have mine in the garage. I don't know if you're going to use it, I was going to paint it over and let the Leos use it. But with that, if there's no other comment, we are going to, oh, Karen, go ahead.
Just one quick thing. I think with the signs, people can just throw them away.
Okay.
If they have them, and we can pick up whatever's left. But also, one little thing I just wanted to mention, that I know this smushed, the high school district isn't here, but I know that they're talking about teacher housing on the Mills campus, and want to make sure we have that on our radar.
What's on the Mills campus?
Teacher housing.
Oh, teacher housing, okay.
So it's coming up again. I think probably on that old baseball field is what they're thinking.
The girls' baseball field, the muddy one?
I'm not sure. No, I think they redid that one. Okay, I'm not sure.
It's how they put it, they go.
And I don't know exactly where it is. I know the high school district isn't here, but I just wanted.
It's on Sebastian, isn't it, Tom? Is that the street?
It's on the, it's on the old baseball field. I haven't heard anything about it for several years, but we'll look into it. And then just for the record, so, so there's no confusion. Any plan has to come before the city council for review and approval and entitlement. Because I do know there's some confusion and some questions in the community. I want to say probably four years ago, when there was a community meeting at Mills High School regarding, regarding those plans, so.
Are you talking about the one on Sequoia? The old baseball field? And then you mentioned there's discussions about teacher housing at that location?
I believe so. I mean, I don't want to get ahead of them, but that is what I'm hearing.
It was 147 units when it was presented. I know I met with then-Superintendent Scully, Scully, on that one.
It was in a different location because it was in that first.
They had two, they had both. I've seen plans or drawings of both.
Right, and then they redid the sports complex in the original area that I think that they were proposing housing. But I think now that they've sort of left that baseball field up on Ashton. I think that's what they're talking about. But I don't, I don't know, I don't want to speak for them. I just, I've just heard it on the radar.
Okay, thank you. And with nothing else, closing, closing the meeting at 8:47. We, oh, I'm sorry, hold that. We'll get back for the next scheduled meeting, but we're looking at September and then March. Thank you for that recommendation. But we'll try to have subcommittee meetings in June. Okay? Very good, thank you, thank you all.